One that this is our scholar leader representatives. Thank you for that. Thank you. Thanks for that. This is live. Scholar leader, let me just remind people what that means. The staff and administration at the middle school has selected people that represent great leaders, that they demonstrate respect, that they work well with others. They're the kind of kids that you just want to bring home and hang out with. The cool thing about the two kids that I brought here tonight is that they are those leaders almost in the background, if that makes sense, that they lead by example. They set the tone and kids just follow. And they don't do it with loud voices. They don't do it with huge activities. They just lead. So Ramsey, you've met before. He was our Project 351 rep. He did that for us, I believe that was in January. He also is an outstanding soccer and baseball player, basketball player. Grades are through the roof, which I told you about before. He's a part of our National Junior Honor Society and tutors some of our kids. Mona Lisa Almeida, this is the first time you're going to be lucky enough to meet her. She's a soccer player for the Rockland town of Rockland. Again, involved in our National Junior Honor Society. Grades are fantastic. And just, they both set a fantastic tone. So I am very pleased to introduce Dr. Kron to our two scholar leaders.
Excellent. And then you ran away.
I know.
All right. Ramsey is awarded this certificate for selection in the New England League of Middle School Scholar Leader Program on this 29th day of May 2018. Congratulations. Okay, Mona Lisa Almeida. How did I say that? Did I do okay?
Yeah.
I did all right? Okay. Is awarded this certificate for selection in the New England League of Middle Schools Scholar Leader Program on this 29th day of May 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone want to take a picture? We have time. Dave's going to humor me. Yes. All right, come closer. There we go.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations to you both.
Wait, wait, wait. Come on back. We've got some questions for you guys.
Done? Ramsey, you know about it.
I have to go back? Okay, I'm going back. I'm coming too.
Congratulations to you both, just real quick before we comment to the committee. It's outstanding. Good for you both. We're really proud of you both. Ramsey, I know we've met before. I get the sense that this won't be the last time we'll meet at a school committee meeting. You've got a bright future ahead and you're doing great. What position do you play at basketball?
Center.
Center, I could tell. I didn't think it was going to be point guard. And Mona Lisa, I'm really excited to meet you tonight. Great job. What a great honor. And I know we'll probably, given this award, probably be you again as well too. But congratulations to you both. We're really proud. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
This is my, one of my favorite things that we do in meetings is when we get to recognize the students for what they do. And like Mr. Biggins said, Ramsey, we've seen you before. I have a feeling it's going to be an annual thing. Mona Lisa, I think it's going to be the same way, especially if you guys keep up the grades, keep doing what you're doing, keep it up with the sports and just overall be great kids and great Bulldogs. And I wish we had more of you, you know? So keep it up.
Enjoy your high school career.
Yes.
You're going to have a great one. Enjoy every minute of it.
Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations. Ramsey, thank you so much for supporting Kevin. Kevin was on Coach Yusef's basketball team and Ramsey was huge for him, huge for his confidence. So I've seen him in action and he's awesome. I'm proud. Congratulations.
Thank you.
As Mr. Garofalo said, there's so many great things going on in Rockland Public Schools and it's really one of the best parts of our meetings when we get to experience what the students are doing in their classrooms and the achievements that they're having. So congratulations again to both Mona Lisa and Ramsey. Great to have you here tonight. Next up on tonight's agenda are reports. And tonight we have financial reports for the month of April. We'll be entertaining five motions for the school department, the high school student activities department, the middle school student activities department, the cafeteria, and the daycare.
Five motions.
Five seconds.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. Next up, we have monthly reports for the months of March and April. Tonight we'll be entertaining 17 motions for the departments of art, athletic, computer technology, daycare, deans, English 5 to 8, English 9 to 12, family consumer science, math 5 to 8, math 9 to 12, music, physical education, radio, TV stations, social studies, special education, middle school, and foreign language.
Seventeen motions.
Seventeen seconds.
All those in favor?
Time seventeen.
That's a vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And Alan, I think I just skipped over you.
It's okay.
Superintendents report.
That's okay.
Dr. Kron. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make you feel in the glutton.
No, that's okay. I'm fine.
You're making up.
I'm the youngest of three. I'm good. I briefly want to say congratulations to the students for completing all of your MCAS this year. I don't know what that feels like because I never had to take those kinds of tests during, when I was in school. But I know that as students, you take great pride in your own work. And I, but I also think that it's leaked over to you that you feel a little responsible for your scores and how they affect how your school is viewed. And that's sort of unfortunate, but at the same time, when you play on a team or you play on a, you know, you play on a sports team, you're representing the town, you feel that same sense of ownership. But we're proud of you because I know how hard you worked. And I'm speaking all the way to our students in third grade who are taking tests, so. And I'd also like to thank all of the teachers who worked so hard to prepare them for those tests. I know it's common to hear people sort of speak ill of the terms "teach to the test", but the fact is, we all teach to the test. And if you don't have a test, you don't know what it is you're aiming for. So we do work hard to do well on these exams and it takes a lot of moving parts to make it happen. And I appreciate the hard work of the teachers. And lastly, I'd like to thank Tim Wells, Chris Howe, and Lisa Ryan, our absolutely outstanding technology staff who are supporting MCAS being given on computers this year in all but grade three and high school. And next year will be all computerized. So it doesn't sound, it may not sound like a big deal, but when you have 2,000 students taking exams on computers, someone has to take care of all that and make sure that our computers are speaking to the state and so on and so forth. And Tim Wells, Chris Howe, and Lisa Ryan are outstanding. So thank you very much for your work.
Have you practiced that with the states? I know they had a sample going on recently.
Yeah, they, well, we had a couple incidents this time around actually where two exams were not uploaded.
Oh, yeah.
They never made it to the state. And unfortunately for our kids, they had to redo the whole test. And that's tough for, to ask a fourth grader to redo their math tests that they spent 90 minutes really working hard on. So, but it happens and it could-
We find out why?
Could have been worse. No, just an upload glitch, sort of, yeah. Something that could happen, happens all the time when we're doing our own work.
Right.
So, but anyway, it's no small feat and I thank everyone from the teachers and the students and the parents because these exams are important and they are important for a lot, a lot of reasons. And finally, AP exams are finished as well. And just want to congratulate Dr. Harrison and the entire high school staff. We had 121 students take 208 advanced placement exams this year. The high school is very proud of the fact that we offer 13 advanced placement courses and our students are excelling. Every year the scores get better. Every year more kids are participating in AP. And when our seniors come back to talk to us, the ones who have graduated and they're freshmen in college now and they come back, we heard, we heard really great firsthand information about how those courses allowed students to take upper level courses instead of remedial or, and saved them thousands of dollars in some cases. So we continue to encourage students to participate in the advanced placement program. You do not have to be the greatest student on earth to participate in advanced placement. While AP calculus is not for everyone, AP psychology is. And there's a rigor to that course that will prepare you for college. So again, congratulations to the high school for continuing to grow this aspect of the curriculum. And my final thing, so proud to be associated with the town of Rockland. The Memorial Day parade and ceremony were outstanding. And a special shout out to the band, who I think sounded phenomenal. And that was really nice to see, sort of a getting out of the car and hearing the drum line playing across town and hearing them really nail each one of the service songs and seeing the looks on the faces of the veterans who were there. They just really made the ceremony something extra special. So thank you to Mr. Piazza and the entire music department and the music students for that. That's all I have.
I'll second that on the band. I walked with them all. They were right behind me.
They did a good job, didn't they?
There's a lot of great things that make Rockland a great place that we talk about all the time. And, you know, one of them I think that stands out about Rockland is how Rockland really stands behind its veterans and stands behind remembering and celebrating their service, whether it be Memorial Day or whether it be just any event throughout the year that our veterans take part in to, you know, keep up local landmarks, whether it be the stadium or whatever it might be. Rockland's a great place to live and our Memorial Day parade really is one of those things that show it every single year. And it's great that our students are able to be a part of that in March and really be a great contributor to that and be able to learn a little bit about what it means to be from Rockland. So great news. Any other comments from the committee?
Yeah. On the band, one, being a former bandite, if you will, in my time here. It was great to be up on my roof cleaning my gutters because my kids weren't home. And being able to hear the band, which is something in years past I couldn't say I could, and they go right by my house. So the fact that the music program is starting to build back up makes me extremely happy because kids get a lot out of that. I got a lot out of the years that I did it. In fact, I to this day still say I miss playing music. So I think that's awesome. My other thing, all the Alice training complete?
We have done some of the elementaries, but I don't believe all of the elementaries are finished. But we did some elementary Alice training and I think that it went very, very well. It was handled very carefully.
Yeah, I was, I was going to comment on that. I actually happened to stumble into Memorial Park when Ethan was doing it. And I can't say enough how lucky we are to have a school resource officer, as Officer Snable is. He's incredible. The way he handled the kids and was, I caught him in a second grade classroom, the way he handled it, talking about it, what to do, all the code words, everything. It was, the fact that we have to worry about that is terrible, but the way he handled it, the kids weren't phased. You know, there wasn't, you know, my daughter didn't come home with nightmares. She came home giving me information that we have to build a fort. We can throw things at people, run out the door, you know, all these different things. And I can't say enough how happy I am that we have Officer Snable as our school resource officer. I wish we could clone him and have multiple more, so I just wanted to pass that on to everybody, so.
Sure, we appreciate that.
Any other comments from the committee? Excellent. Thank you very much. Under old business, first up, under item A, request for approval of the 2018-19 Rockland High School Handbook, and this is the second reading. Any other further comments or questions from the committee?
Most are approved.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you. Next up, item B, we have completed, A, completed fundraiser. And the special education PAC had a toll booth that raised $3,027, which is outstanding because the amount of money expected was $2,000. And last year they collected $2380. So today, $3,027, outstanding work.
That's a win.
Thank you very much. Next up, under new business, we have a special education PAC report. Dr. Kron?
Yes, I'm not sure if Dr. Miniglia is going to come too or no?
Hello.
Hello.
How are you? If you know the Mass Special Education Law requires that we have a PAC. So the, so we join, the Rockland CPAC is dedicated parents who committed to provide information and support to parents with children of all abilities and disabilities. This year we hosted five meetings. However, one of them had been, a couple had been canceled due to snow. In attempt to access the kids to the community and socialize, we received great feedback from the parents and then we hope that the reminders, and we really appreciate Colleen doing the call around, that seemed to increase participation. Our meetings range from generalized meetings of who we are as a PAC to help families with questions. This year, as I said, it's been challenging due to the snow. We were able to cover how to read an IEP from the Federation. And basic rights workshop was done by Linda, giving the parents the tools and resources to be effective partners in the IEP meetings determining their children's needs and the educational planning and monitoring of the child's progress throughout the school year. We reached out to neighboring communities. Next year we're going to be hopefully working with Hanover and sharing some of our meetings so that we can, one, pool our budget together so that it won't, because some speakers can be up to $1,000 depending upon the subject. We wish to extend our appreciation to the people personnel services, Linda Magnolia, Deb Rosado, Linda Richelli, Donna Lamb, Superintendent Kron, Colin, I'm going to mess up your name. Lizzy. The principals and the staff, including the janitors and maintenance staffs who were at events, were always willing to help us when things went awry. And then we look forward to 2019. As we said, we raised $3,000 at the toll booth. And what was great was some kids, a couple of people came with their kids in the back seat and they opened the back window and the kids put their little change in Ziploc bags into the buckets. So it was nice to see the kids and we want to thank the police officers. There were, a couple of them came back this year and have already said that they signed up for next year if we have it approved. One officer, I think it was the lieutenant, went and got us more cones because he didn't think it was safe enough. So he went and got the cones to make sure that both roads were safe and there was no incidents. Do you have any questions? I also have a, what I'd like to do is usually we send out in the beginning of the year for parents to sign up for our email, but what I'd like to do is send it at the end of the year so that when the kids are going home for the summer, the parent can look at it and then resend it out, just so that we can increase awareness. And would also like to have other meetings and any suggestions on topics, you know, we'd like the committee to give input. And you're welcome to come to any of our meetings.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for, A, being here tonight, but B, the work that you guys do all the time. Our CPACs are really such a uniquely important PAC. The work that you all do is so uniquely important in the sense that you really lend a great support and a great informational support and emotional support to your peers that are on the CPAC with you. And I just, I know that you've got some great people in place and I hope that that CPAC will grow and that more people will be able to be a part of it and to be a help. Outstanding job on the fundraising. That's absolutely fantastic and I know that'll pay great fruits for you guys going down the road.
So what we do with the toll booth is a little bit more than half goes to scholarships. So Megan Lund and Emily McLaughlin will be getting scholarships. And then we have a new chapter scholarship, which is like a stipend for a child leaving the program. So they're either, you know, graduating high school but not going on to college, but they're in a substantially separate class, or they reach in '22. And they might need, you know, sneakers for a job or, you know, something for them to feel good about themselves. And Michael Bodler is a recipient of this year's.
Outstanding. That's great. Dr. Kron?
Marcy, I just want to thank you for the way you approach the work of the PAC. I think you were the first person to come to one of my coffees at one time and we met quite a while ago. And I, I want to say thank you for the way you do your work because it's not uncommon for parents of students with disabilities to be at odds with a school district. It's not uncommon. And your approach to, to the challenges that we all face together is very, very helpful. And I appreciate it. And I think Dr. Miniglia appreciates it as well. And it makes a really big difference and it's very helpful and I thank you for your work.
Well, thank you. I do have to give a shout out to Sharon McGonagall because it's the first IEP, well, last year, that I actually felt like I hit the lottery because my daughter's made progress. She's in a regular English class, like she's still in the sub separate. Ms. White, I can't speak enough about her. She's a godsend.
Yep.
Well, so are you.
It's good to hear. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miniglia. Thank you. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is the Rogers Middle School PAC School Council and School Improvement Plan. Dr. Kron?
I am going to turn this over to Ms. Bond.
And I'm going to have Christine Lewis and Nancy Anderson come up first and they'll talk a little bit about the work that our PAC has done this year. And I want to just formally thank Christine Lewis, who will be leaving the middle school, her son will be leaving, and Lynn Beatrice for all the work that they have done for our PAC for the last couple of years. They've really moved us in a fantastic direction and welcome Nancy Anderson, who's going to take the lead. So I'll let you go first.
Thank you. As you heard, this is my final meeting. Thank you very much. And I dragged poor Nancy up here to meet you all also. This year we had a fairly good year, honestly. We had the Meadow Farms Catalog fundraiser, the Cookie fundraiser, which we kind of threw in there also, gift card sales, Scholastic Book Fair, which we always do really well at. And we've kind of determined that we're now donating all of our proceeds to the library and to all of the teachers to capture any books that they want, which has been a positive. Instead of getting money back towards the PAC, we'd rather give it back to the school. The Shamrock Classic, we raised over $2,000 for that. The raffle baskets of the Shamrock Classic also. Box tops for education, I think we have a program going forward that we're going to try and push that a little bit more because I think it kind of falls off after elementary school. And we also have a silent auction that we'd actually like to talk about that's coming up in a few weeks that doesn't show up on our program of what we've actually done. You have the- I left it over there. It's over there. We have a silent auction coming up that's going to be in correspondence with the history fair. And that's going to be in the library. We're going to inundate you with silent auction items, so please don't hesitate to stop by. Tons of exciting things. Just got the flyer approved today, so. You haven't even seen it yet.
I have.
You've already approved the fundraiser, but you haven't seen this yet. So we're very excited for this. I think this is going to be almost like the Shamrock Classic did for us. It was a really big push.
Flag day, right?
Is it? It is. Is it flag day? It is flag day. We'll have to have a couple of flags too.
Yeah.
I think we do actually have. Good, that's even better. We were able to help with the agenda books again this year, half the cost of that, and the field trip buses for both sides for all four grades. The Staff Appreciation Week, which they love to do, and I know that they love it. And the foundation, excuse me, for the golf tournament, Rockland Education Foundation, we also try and keep sponsoring a hole for that each year. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Outstanding work.
Keep the 14th open. We'll see you all there. Yes, please keep the 14th open.
Absolutely. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to see you go.
I'm going to high school. I'm not going to-
On to the next.
We'll see you back next year here.
On to the next.
No, no, no. No. Thank you.
Great work. Thanks so much. Next on, oops, I'm sorry, Beth, go right ahead.
Sorry.
Please.
Let me just say that the history fair will be, that Thursday night is 6 to 8. I believe we sent some invitations out. Also, if you're unable to go the night of the history fair, that next day, which would be the 15th, feel free to come by and we'll walk you through, we'll have a kid walk you through and show you everything. It's, Mrs. Lewis is correct, it's the next big thing for us. Between one book, one school and this, I think we're-
You're going to have valet parking? Last year it was unbelievable. You couldn't get a place.
You send me a text and I will go get your car. I'll drive you to the vacuum and drop you right back off.
I smell a fundraiser.
That's a good, that's a good idea. Let me just say quickly about our school improvement plan. I just want to thank everybody who is working so hard to improve our school each and every day. And that's the kids and the families, the parents, the custodians, the cafeteria, the front office, Nancy and Lynn, our guidance staff, our teachers, our parents, everybody. Everybody is really working so hard to make things better, make things good at our school and I appreciate that. And I feel we've made some really nice changes this year and they're going to continue to happen. And let me also thank our school council who's had some great input into all the work that's happening this year. That's Mary Howes, Joan Costello, Trish Fallon, Lindsay Crook, Cheryl Shipper, Carol, Jill Eli, is that right, Jill? Right?
Eli, yeah.
Jill Maroney, Meg Mahar, and Jeannie Blaney, Jeanne Blaney. They've come and met with us and done some great stuff. Our focus for next year is going to be, is going to continue to be making our curriculum better. So if you look at the first page, which has to do with student learning, I'm just going to focus on a few things. We did a great job this year putting out some common assessments. So our social studies and our science and our math, the teachers are coming together, the kids are taking the same test and the teachers are looking at the test results to move our curriculum forward. We're going to spend a lot of time next year making sure that we're using that data appropriately. And that's going to start with making sure that everybody knows how to use the data. So we have a data team, Mike Haggerty, Mary Howes, and Janet Cook that have done some training. We're going to take some time at the beginning of the year to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that because we've gotten some new teachers. We're also going to focus next year quite a bit on doing some work with our English teachers and our social studies teachers coming together interdisciplinary, our science teachers and our math teachers. For example, you'll see at our history fair that the written work that the kids have done in seventh grade is a collaboration in some regards between Joan Costello and Katie Thornley. They're doing the writing work in one class, they're doing the history work in the other, the research, they're bringing it together. There's a ton of collaboration. That's going to continue. We're going to take a look now at our math. We've looked at our science, we've looked at our social studies, we've looked at our ELA. Next, we're going to look at our math curriculum. We're also going to try to make sure that we can find the right assessments for middle school kids. So beyond the common assessments is Gal, we took a year off from Galileo this year because it takes so much time and we focused on common assessments. Well, we're going to go out and look and see what are some other common assessments that are quick and easy that ELA teachers can use quickly and then get that data from. That's a big focus for us. Again, PBIAS and ALIS is a huge focus for us. We did the training last week and our kids were amazing. So we'll continue to have that language and they want to continue to train. They want to continue to be a part of it from grade five to eight. So I think that's exciting. Our staff is asked to have a focus on ELL and special education and accelerated learners as far as some of our PD for next year, so we're going to work on that. And another focus for us is going to be, what does good writing look like everywhere? So making sure that our social studies teachers and our science teachers and our math teachers have high expectations for writing. Writing is not just in ELA classes. It happens everywhere. So having some nice examples and exemplars of good writing that everybody can take a look at. Continuing our common assessments, like I said, and analyzing that data and then continuing to work hard to communicate with the community and with the families. We're going to invite the senior center to come to our history fair. I'm going to go down there next week and give them a flyer and, you know, make sure that we're doing some of that stuff, so everybody's aware of what's happening. I think the resource allocation for me is pretty much the same as last year, as far as making sure everybody's a part of it. Excuse me, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Bond?
I think...
You want to go first?
No.
Mr. Graffel, go ahead.
Okay. I think it's great, the comboing of the math and science and the social studies and English, because they go hand in hand. I have a history degree, and I hated writing in high school, and all I had to do in college was read and write, which, you know, but I wanted to do that for history. So I think jumping on that right away at this level is going to be huge, and then carrying it with math and science, as we all know, you can't do any science without math behind you. So I think that's awesome, so I'd like to see that keep moving.
Ms. Phelps?
I just wanted to say, I want to thank you and your staff. There's a lot of hard work here, reduced to three or four pages. A lot of hard work and a lot of goals, a lot of excitement. Things are good in the middle school.
I think they are.
And they're getting better all the time.
Fantastic. So we appreciate it.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bond.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve the Rockland Middle School School Improvement Plan. All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda, item C, under New Business, we have the Rockland High School School Improvement Plan and School Council. And I believe we have Dr. Harrison with us.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here tonight. On behalf of the high school, I just want to thank our site council, Mr. Phelps is on our site council, but also two parents, Ms. Shields, Ms. Julie Shields and Ms. Janine Oliver, who've been on the site council for the last four years. We're going to greatly miss them. They've been just wonderful members of the site council. Sidney McKenna is a senior who'll be graduating. She's been on the site council as well for four years, as well as Greta Russo, Caitlin Cameron, and Matty Gier. One of the things that's unique about the site councils, we have student members in addition to parents and a community rep and faculty, so it's really nice to have all of the different stakeholders in our meetings. And then our faculty members, Ms. Lanigan, Ms. Hoyou, and Mr. McAllister. We've really had a great year in site council, and I thank them for their time. As well, our faculty had a great year, our staff, as well as our student body. I'm very proud of our school and the direction we're moving in. There's just a lot of positive things happening throughout our building, and there's a lot to be proud of. Having said that, we're very excited as we've begun to work on our plans for next year. I won't go over the whole school improvement plan, but I'll just kind of talk about a few of the key things, key themes that you may see. The first is, we are beginning the process of revising our curriculum. So we have curriculum in each course right now, but it hasn't been updated for about five years. So we've revised our template, and we'll be using a lot of our professional development time next year to begin that process, and our template aligns to our accreditation standards, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. Secondly, we're going to be implementing the new attendance policy, which focuses more on credit loss and recovery and moving away from Saturday school and suspensions as a consequence for excessive absences. I think this is going to do a lot in terms of partnering with families and getting them more on board, because there's a huge relationship between kids that are absent and kids who fail courses, and I think this policy will really zone in on getting the kid, the parent, and the teachers all working together to improve attendance behavior, because I believe that improves academic performance naturally. We'll be rolling out computer-based testing as well. This is new for the high school. We did participate in a field test in April, and that went very smoothly, but next year we'll be rolling that out full force in math, English, and science, and that's a big deal at the high school. It's a graduation requirement, and we really haven't seen what this test looks like at this point. So it's a little nerve-wracking, but I have complete confidence in our teachers to prepare our kids, and I know our kids will do just fine. Grade Cam is something we purchased with grant money, and we're excited to roll that out a little bit more in the fall. What that does, it allows teachers to use their phones to gather instant data from quizzes, and it's what we call a quick formative assessment. They can look at how kids did on a multiple-choice, 10-question quiz instantly by just scanning it, the barcode on the multiple-choice test, and then they can look at which questions kids got wrong most frequently and which questions kids did great on, and then zero in on individual students. So that's something that, it's called a formative assessment, that we're very excited about. We also have our vision of the graduate we created this past year, and this is for accreditation with NIASC, which will begin next year, is when we start our self-study. And that'll begin with a survey in the fall, where we'll have different stakeholders, and we have a steering committee. And if you remember from a few years ago, I think we had our accreditation maybe five years, right before Dr. Cron, I think, got there, we're up, they've changed the process a little bit, where it's not just once every 10 years, they require what they call a self-study visit before your 2021 accreditation. So we're due to be accredited in 2021, but they spend three or four days with us next year as part of their, a new step in the process. So we'll be working on our self-study, which is, I think, going to be good. I'm a big believer in reflection, and I think NIASC gives us the ability to reflect. I think their standards are high quality, their standards for accreditation overwhelming at times, but I think it's high quality. So we're excited about that. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Just a compliment, Dr. Harrison, you mentioned how great the site council is. Well, it doesn't happen without great leadership, and you've worked hard on this, and it makes an awful lot of sense, the different changes that are being made, particularly in the area of attendance and trying to light kids up to coming to school and not punish them so much when they're not performing, giving them ways to improve with rewards and things like that. So I'm impressed with it, but as I say, I thank you for your leadership.
Do they have the NIASC changes on their website?
They do.
Okay. I forget if, yeah. That's always evolving, yeah. I've been on stuff a little bit. It is interesting.
A lot of new buzzwords. You like buzzwords.
Yeah, they're great for that.
Kind of continued Mr. Phelps's comments, he was talking about attendance and students, you know, wanting to come to school. And one thing that kind of jumped off the page at me was a goal that you had of having 95% of freshmen involved in a club or activity or athletic team. And that's something that makes kids want to come to school, but that number just seemed amazingly high to me. That's awesome. Where are you about right now? Any idea?
I would say 70%.
70?
For freshmen, 70%. If you account club, activity, sports, and I'd say sports is a big chunk. We actually have the numbers, I could get you the real numbers.
Big transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, a huge transition. I think there's a lot of intimidation, worry on the part of the student, and to encourage them to get involved with fellow students, upperclassmen. It's going to be great. I really do, I think it'll be great.
It is really a great school community, the high school is, and I know a lot of eighth graders discovered that in their freshman year, but a goal of 95% involvement would be amazing if you could even get close to that, because I think, to your point, Mr. Phelps, it really integrates kids, it makes them, you know, fall in love with coming to school and being, and make friends with some sophomores and juniors and seniors. That's all great stuff, and I don't know, that particular, I know there's a lot of other big work that went on in this, but that number just jumped off the page at me.
What we saw in our senior exit surveys from last year, Ms. Hoffman, one of our math teachers, helps with the analysis of those surveys. What she was able to do is break it down, so the students, and you probably all would assume this, but the students that go to four-year schools were more likely involved in extracurricular activity, whether it's music, art, sports, and that correlation, that was where that idea of getting freshmen involved, 95% shooting high, because the more likelihood if they're involved in the school and connected, that they will be successful in post-secondary.
Great.
Yeah, it's actually pretty true, because when I stepped foot in the high school, we were eighth graders. But as eighth graders, we had the ability to play the freshman sports, join student government, key club, whatever clubs there were, we were allowed to join in. And as eighth graders, a lot of us did that, and it made a difference, and most of us kept with it right on through. So I would think that a bunch of us at the eighth grade level doing it was great. I think the freshmen need to do it, and I think, I think 70% is a good number, as it is, but 95% would be ideal, and let's push them to do it, you know? So, great work.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
I'm going to go check the weather for Friday.
Very good, very good. Motion to approve the Rockland High School School Improvement Plan.
Motion.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you. Next up on tonight's agenda, item D, we have the Rockland High School Music Boosters with us tonight.
Well, good evening. We are the Rockland Music Boosters. We're a group of parent volunteers that support the music department and students throughout the year. We meet once a month. We have four elected officers, myself, I'm Doug Schofield, the president, Denise Dalton's the vice president, my wife Mary Ann Schofield is treasurer, and Caroline Field is our secretary liaison. It's nice to have everybody here tonight. And a big thank you to all the parents also that have helped us this year. We've had a really good group, a strong group of parents that have been helping us out, and it's really made it a smooth year. Things have gone really well. Some of the things the boosters help with is organizing the band camp for the marching band season. We supply food and clean the uniforms and stuff at the end of the season, the marching drills for the field show, and we have a specialist Kenny Hadley come in and help the drum kids with different things and get them to improve themselves. So that's one of the big items for the year. We help with the football games, with the shows and all the things involved with the football season, the field show and the stand tunes and all that, whatever we can do to help them. This year, we also paid for a new drum set for the school, so they have a second set, so they aren't limited to one set, and that should help that out. We also help with the Veterans Day Parade, all the various concerts that go on at the school, the holiday concerts, pops, Broadway night. This year also, we went up to the University of New Hampshire to Band Day up there. It's a small thing where a few schools join the actual college band and get to do the field show with the college band and then play stand tunes with the college band, and they really had a good time with that. And we helped with the cost of the bus, that was a long day spent up there, but that was a really good day, good experience for the kids. The other thing we do is the holiday stroll uptown, we set up a tent and fundraise up there. This year, Curves helped us, let us set up in front of their store this year. We also went into Berkeley this year to the Jazz Fest, and we're able to see the Berkeley Jazz Band perform, and we did a tour of the Berkeley College of Music, too, with the kids, so that got them a little taste of the school in there. We also helped out a little bit with the musical there, The Wizard of Oz, which went really well. We, the boosters helped pay, we paid for the digital backgrounds for the musical, the projections, and we helped sell tickets, and I thought the kids did an amazing job. If you guys saw it, it was really, really great, especially the girl that did Dorothy was phenomenal, outstanding, and she's only a freshman, too, so that's pretty cool. We also just did the awards banquet for the chorus and band students, and the third year, students got jackets, and we did other awards for all the years of completion that they did there. Thank you to the 99 for supplying the food, and they did donate some of it, which was very nice of them. They've been very good to the music program and the school in general, the 99's been great. And we just wrapped up the Memorial Day Parade yesterday, and I thought that went really well. The kids did a great job, and the band was a really big part of it. Like you said, the veterans were really impressed, and it really sounded great. The kids' playing taps were phenomenal, and I thought that went really well. Even though it was drizzling, we still got that done, so. And for the graduation coming up on Friday, the boosters also provide five music scholarships, so that's one of the big things we do. And all of that this year ended up costing about $12,600 was what we paid out this year. And a large part of what we do is fundraising, too. The town of Rockland's been very generous, supporting our fundraising, and this year we raised about $14,000 in fundraising, so we came pretty close to breaking even, so that was really good. We had a very good year with all that. Two of the big fundraisers we did were the mattress fundraiser here at the school. Jack Isaacs coordinated that, did 99% of the work, so that was a good fundraiser for us, and we plan to do that again later on, maybe this year. The other big one was, we had an LCR tournament up at the Eagles Hall, and the Eagles donated the room for us, and that was a pretty successful one for us, too. And we do the can and bottle bin down at Bicentennial Park, and people are very generous, donating down there, so, and that's a pretty steady moneymaker for us, too. One other thing this year is that we encourage the eighth graders to participate, and they did marching band this year, and we also invited them to the awards banquet and recognized them for helping out with the marching season, because the numbers were low and we needed the help from them, and that was really good. And they really appreciated it at the awards banquet, to be recognized, so. All of us up here at, tonight, are actually second year at this, and we all have seniors, so we're encouraging parents to get involved and help fill the open positions when we move on. We need the parents to help out, to keep the boosters going. And this year, the music department's had a great staff with John Piazza Jr., Jeff Popatic, Michelle Booth, Victoria McCombe, and Lindsay Crook. It's been really great working with all of them. They're all great people, and it's really been a lot of fun to work with all of them. Really got good people in place right now, so. And thank you, Dr. Cron, and Dr. Harrison, and Carla Dunn, and Donna Lamb, for all your help with getting things organized for us, and whatever we need done. I think that's about all I have, but it's been a great year. Things have gone really well, and all been pretty positive this year, so. Any questions?
Just a quick comment, you know, the upward trajectory in the growth of our band and music program has been something that this committee has been very proud of and observed very closely as of recently, and you folks are a really big part of that. And, you know, the money that you've raised, the enrichment that you've provided, the sense of pride that you can really tangibly feel around our music program now is very noticeable. And thank you for your part in that and that initiative, and it's so great for our music program to have the support that you guys have been able to, been there to lend it. Mr. Phelps?
I just want to say thank you to the four of you. I mean, it doesn't happen, like I just said to Dr. Harrison, without great leadership, and what a fun group you guys are. I just can't get over, I mean, you're looking for parents to get involved. I know there's a lot of hard work, but you guys have a lot of fun. I mean, that awards banquet was super, just super, and all the, and the kids, what a group of kids. I mean, they're just having a ball, and the improvement that you see. I mean, it starts the first football game. It, I'll just say, it's not like it used to be. You get down there, and I sit there, because you guys are our PR group for us. You really are. Kids go out and perform, and the taxpayers see that, and they see how good they are, that does nothing but help the school system. I know the kids are having fun, but it's great for us as well. And I just personally want to thank you for all the enjoyment that you've given me all year. I mean, everything, I thought the Cowardly Lion was pretty good, too. But you're right, to watch this girl as a freshman come along, she's going to be unbelievable. She really is. So thank you again for all the enjoyment that you gave me personally, and what you've done for the Rockland Public Schools.
Thank you guys.
I'd like to thank you, too. And just watching you read this list of accomplishments and, you know, and adventures, you know, you seem like you're really enjoying going through that list.
Quite a list.
Yeah, it is quite a list.
I was in the band back in the 70s with Mr. Reuter, going way back, and Mr. Bell, so...
Oh, yeah, wow.
I don't know how far back the boosters go, but that was, what, '74, that I was here, and it was already here then, so.
They were around in '85, I know that.
Well, I know they were around when I was here, because my parents were on them. This might be my favorite meeting of the year. We got to talk about history, there was mention of football, and now we're talking about the band. I literally, this is probably my favorite one of the year. How many kids are in the band now? favorite one of the year. How many kids are in the band now?
I think we had sixty with band and chorus.
Okay. So, I was here. I got the privilege of Steve Bell and Bob Miffin.
Yep.
We had fifth grade band, sixth and seventh grade band, eighth grade band, and the high school band and jazz band. There was about seventy-five of us in the high school band. And we did the shows. I used to have to do halftime in my football equipment, which is awkward enough when you're carrying a baritone sax. It's even more awkward, but it was fun. You know, I think not enough can be said about any type of art in a school, but something music related that gets the kids out in front of people where they are the spotlight, grooms them down the line and it gives them a creative outlet. I know, I know Alan can agree on that. He still yells at me because I haven't played since I graduated and he still plays. But I think it's awesome, the growth that I'm seeing. I, I am so excited for this with the music department. I hope that we're able to get parents like you guys to, to slide in. Hopefully, it is the younger parents that come in, that stick around, so they're here for the whole run of it. You guys are doing a great job and I'm so, so happy to see this program bouncing back to where it was. And it actually, it makes me very, very proud, so. Thank you.
Us too.
Make a great point there. You know, one of the things that happened yesterday is that, I think one of the most difficult pieces to play at any time is taps. And they did a super job.
Yeah, they did a great job.
I listened to it three times yesterday. Gets me every time, so, yeah.
Well, thank you all for the great work you do. Really, really appreciate the prog shows. Thank you so much. Thank you. Well, the meeting, it just keeps getting better and better.
All right, I left out the food.
Yeah, every year we get to hear from Chartwell's for our annual update. And one of our favorite ladies, our good friend Adele, always brings us a nice little treat and if the camera can see that, but I think I'm the only committee member without, with, with no self-discipline and I've been digging into this already. So thank you. It is healthy though.
I'm lucky to hear me chewing.
Welcome.
Hi there. I'm Adele Leonard, the Food Service Director, and this is Erin Long, my boss from Chartwell's. And, I think you're going to do a little chat in first?
Sure. I'll, I'll go over the dry topics first and then I'll turn it over to Adele for the fun stuff. So, um, thank you for having us tonight. And usually every year for the last five or six, Adele and I have come forward and one of the things we begrudgingly have to discuss with the committee is any recommendations for meal pricing for the following year. So about every other year, we've had to make a recommendation. And that basically comes from the USDA. The USDA sets guidelines for school districts on what the meal pricing should be and it's based on a pricing tool. So I'm happy to say that this is the first year since two thousand and ten that the USDA has granted school districts across the country an exemption from having to raise prices using this tool. I don't know where it comes from. I don't know how long it will continue, but for the eighteen, nineteen school year, if the school lunch revolving fund has a zero or positive balance in it, there's no need to raise prices. So we're in good shape there because we do have a positive balance in the school lunch account. So I'm happy to be able to report that to you. So the meal pricing for next year will continue as it is right now, which is breakfast is a dollar fifty and elementary lunch is two seventy and secondary is two ninety-five. So it's the best deal in town. You can't get a meal anywhere better than that. And I've seen a lot of school districts, even in this geographic part of the state, hitting like the three dollar threshold. So the fact that we can maintain under three dollars at this point and still have a positive fund balance, and I know that the, the program this year is in a better financial condition even than it was at the same time last year. So that's a testimony to obviously Adele and her staff doing such a great job in Rockland. So that's my news and I'll turn it over to Adele.
I just have a few things that I wanted to let you know about what's been going on in the district, which have been really kind of exciting. So district-wide, I've been working with Mark and Colleen to try to get a lot of the older equipment and some of the, in, especially the Esten Elementary School upgraded. And with the Towns Assistant and Colleen and Mark orchestrating some things, we've been able to get some new equipment going into that school, which was really kind of cool. Between Colleen and I, we've been applying for grants and we've gotten about six thousand dollars in grants right now for the Rockland Public Schools. A lot is going to our summer program that we're working with. We just picked up a seventh dis, um, site in Rockland for our summer program, which is really kind of cool, where free lunch is given out to any child from the age of eligible to eat to eighteen years of age, no identification. They don't have to be rich, poor, or otherwise you just come and you get your lunch.
Tom, you can't pass for eighteen.
You can, you can try.
So you can buy it.
Do you want to bring my children?
I'll bring your children. I got, I got a couple.
Keep referring, yeah. I'll make it a field trip.
We, I have been working, I love doing this. I've been working with Brenda Folsom and with our Fuel Up to Play sixty, we've been doing some taste testing. We've done it at the middle school with the middle school kids, which was very successful and the kids were wonderful. And we did one over at Memorial Park, which the kids were a riot. We did dragon fruit and all kinds of different fruit that the kids have never seen. They might have seen it in a grocery store, but never been able to try it. So being able to taste these things and see what they're like and, and I always start the meeting by saying to the children, listen, you might have never had this before. If you have allergies, I don't make you try it, but I'd like you to try this so that you can either say, I tried it and I don't like it, or I tried it and I love it. And these kids are just so, I mean, I did kumquats and you should have seen these kids running back for seconds on the kumquats. Me, on the other hand, it wasn't my favorite fruit, but they did love them, so. That was a cool thing. And then taste testing's up at the high school, which is really kind of unique when you do it with them because they're older and they're very opinionated about things. And that's how Oat Rages came into play with the kids because I did taste testings with Oat Rages and the kids loved it. And I am making Oat Rages once to twice a week for the kids because it has to sit overnight to sit. You can't eat it the day that you make it. And the kids really like it. I'm selling five to six off a cot, a breakfast cot in the morning, which is really kind of awesome. And then, we have a wonderful, I have a picture of it, at the high school. We have a wonderful tower garden that has been very successful. We've been taking the lettuce from the tower garden and making salads for the high school students. So when they come through the lunch line, they can have samples of the Swiss chard, all the, the different kinds of lettuces that we've been getting off of it. But I have a great thanks to Angela Armstrong, who is one of our science teachers, who's been very helpful with her students, who are outstanding. And they really get into putting this together because it's hydroponic seeding, which is no, it's no soil. It's all done through water and solutions that get mixed together and it rides up through. Some of my young, the girls will tell me it's the tanning booth because it gives off such a bright light when you walk in the cafeteria. So the kids really like that.
How long does it take for, from the time that you plant it?
You're not going to believe this. The kids planted seeds Thursday or Friday of last week and we've already got plants this high.
Wow.
It's amazing, the turnaround on this. But the kids love it. I've seen kids go by and take pieces off the lettuce and just try it. And it's really good. It's nice and fresh. So, and, we haven't, we haven't mastered the fruit side yet. So we got a beautiful cucumber plant and absolutely gorgeous tomato plants. They would flower and we even tried cross pollinating by taking a Q-tip and cross pollinating. It didn't work. We couldn't get vegetables from it. So Angela thinks that she's going to transplant and see if she can use it after the fact, so.
Try it by her.
But that's been very successful. And as I told you, my summer program is going up to seven sites, which will be really kind of cool going forward.
Could you mention those seven sites for our large viewing audience at home?
We actually, there's seven, but two of them, I have a couple of them that are closed sites. So Jefferson has an open and a closed site. Memorial Park, not Memorial Park, the library has an open site. The community center, the McKinley Community Center is the new one that we've just opened. That is an open site. And with some of our grant money, we were able to purchase some picnic tables to put off the side. So if anybody comes that's not in the building, they can come and sit and eat. And then Jefferson, I did, did I say Jefferson? Jefferson's inside, outside, hot stuff, inside and outside. So we have a camp that's a closed site and hot stuff where the kids come to go to the pool, the little pond. They can come get lunch as well or eat at the playground. The only thing is they have to eat at the site. They can't take the food and walk away with it because of liabilities and, and, you know, you don't want food.
We have a big one at Spring Gate.
Oh, in Spring Gate. Spring Gate's wonderful. My first time I did it was one of my staff members. She was horrified. She thought the kids were going to get hit by the, the minivan because they literally know when I'm coming and they're running for the van. And it's just, it's so rewarding and so wonderful to see these kids do it. I have more fun with my summer program than I do with my school year. I love both of them, but my summer program is a blast. It really is.
Were you outside though?
Oh, yes. Well, most of the time it's inside prepping the food, but where we are outside, we are enjoying it. It's real fun.
Rewarding work in the summer for sure.
It's too bad you don't like what you're doing.
I hate it. It's a horrible job.
I like what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Long, I'm just the district manager of Chartwell's. She's here many times during the year supporting us. And we have a wonderful working relationship with Chartwell's. And thanks to Adele.
Thanks.
Thanks to Adele Leonard, who we've heard is very creative in doing what she does. She's probably the only one in the district that knows every single child's name. Because she works in all the schools and everyone eats and she's there in the cafeterias. But thank you so much for all you do. Creative and makes it fun for the kids.
And for your support too.
Absolutely.
Everybody in the district, thank you.
Adele's enthusiasm carries through each and every one of the cafeteria workers. And they are just as important to our schools and our kids as the teachers and, and everyone else. And it really is, it's, I, I used to spend a lot more time in the high school cafeteria than I'm able to these days. But it's one of my favorite things to do is just to go down and, and, and visit them because they are great people.
You are so true. My staff is outstanding. I can't ask for a better bunch of ladies. They're very supportive and it's all about the students. I mean, I've seen people, some of my staff feel bad for a child that might not be able to buy a lunch because he doesn't have any money on him and they'll give him the money to buy a lunch, so they want, they're unbelievable. They're a great bunch of people.
Schools are really kind of an ecosystem, right? Where you have your educators and you have your cafeteria staff and you have your custodians. In Rockland, we've got some great folks all across the board. And we're, our kids are, our kids are very, very fortunate, no doubt about that. Thank you.
And the kids might even talk to you before they talk to any of us.
Oh, probably do.
Right?
Yeah, they're giving out food.
Right, that's right.
Because of, because of the build your own taco bar at Memorial Park, my daughter now loves tacos. My daughter's name is Isabel and she likes to be referred to as Taco Bell now. And if we see a restaurant that says Taco Tuesdays, she wants to go to dinner for tacos. And, and, you know, she was the pickiest eater in the world and this year, I, I don't know what it is. I'm not complaining. It's obviously, it's got to be because I'm putting more money into that lunch account than I ever have. So, you know, it's, no, I think it's great. I think it's great.
Thank you very much, ladies. Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's your, um...
Next up, we have requests for approval of fundraisers. We've got several fundraisers to approve, eleven in total. Ten of them through the aforementioned Music Boosters. Great work again. We have the Music Boosters. They'll be looking to do a bottle and can recycling drive. They'll be doing music apparel. They'll be doing a fifty-fifty raffle. They'll be doing Dining for a Cause. They'll be doing a mattress fundraiser. They'll be participating in the Paris Haunted House fundraiser. They'll be doing the Holiday Stroll, the prize calendar, another LCR tournament, the Paint Night and, and a Paint Night. The Travel Club will be hosting a mixed bag catalog. So we'll be entertaining eleven motions.
Eleven motions?
We have eleven seconds. Are all those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. Next, Dr. Cron, item eight. We have personnel information. Is there anything that you would like to highlight?
I would just like to thank all of the faculty and staff who, for one reason or another, are either moving on to other positions or are joining us. So it's, it's quite a lengthy list at this time of the year. But thank you very much to all of those folks who worked with us for a short time and are moving on. But that, that's about all. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Last but not least is public service announcements. We always go ladies first. Now, seeing that our student representative Macy has moved on, she had mentioned she wouldn't be here tonight. But I would like to make sure that our committee has the opportunity to thank for, thank her in a formal way at an upcoming meeting to thank her for working so hard and doing so well for us as our student representative this year. So if we could just make note of that. So that being said, public service announcements. Mrs. Maroni?
I want to say thank you to Jefferson and Esten for inviting me to the Memorial Day celebrations. I also attended Memorial Parks. That was exciting to see the different schools and how they celebrate. And thank you for the veterans. And I'm looking forward to attending the graduation Friday night. Hopefully it will be nice out. Once a dog, always a dog. So it'll be good to be on this side of that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Mills?
Ah, yes. Couple, one of the things I wanted to talk, mention is that two fifty-seven, which is my, I have two Eagle Scouts. They're having an Eagle Scout event this Sunday. They have four scouts that are going to be, become Eagle Scouts, attain that. Eric Walstrom, Robert Zalaski, Andrew Wile and Michael Thodde. And I'm going to ask that the committee invite them here then, after they receive their Eagles and come and just talk about some of the Eagle projects that they've done. An example is Eric, if you're, do this. Drive through town, look at the, at the utility poles. You'll see a red strip. Tells the fire department where the closest fire hydrant is.
Wow.
And every, you know, and it tells, you know, point, it has the strips on the certain like that. You could try to read the strips. And that would be interesting to take a look at that. And we have some, and, and, you know, and other ones, you know, build storage of, building for, Andrew did it. He built a storage building for the public library, Rockland Public Library, so they could put their snowblower in there. So the, the scouts are involved in the community a lot. I've been involved with the scouts a lot. Like I said, I have two Eagle Scouts. So with, you know, with the committee's permission, I'd like to invite them to the next meeting and let them come up and talk about their own projects, you know, like that.
That's a great idea.
Good stuff, Tom. Absolutely. That's great. Mr. Phelps?
Great time of the year.
Yeah.
Exciting. Thank you to our seniors to this point for making obviously some great decisions. Not only academically, but the way they carry themselves. Just be safe. Please be safe. Friday is the culmination of thirteen years of school, only to go on and become bigger and better. But please be safe. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Grofflo?
I'd like to give a shout out to Memorial Park for their Memorial Day observance that they did. As always, the kids did a great job singing. Some of them can still sing better than me.
All of them.
Yeah, all of them. Absolutely. And I would also like to thank Dr. Harrison for sending the invite out to the senior class barbecue that was held up at the stadium on Friday. That, that was awesome. Big thank you to the ninety-nine for their involvement with that. You know, it's the second time they've got a shout out today because they've been so good to us as, as a school, community and a town. It does make me wonder, how come we never go to barbecue when I graduated?
Didn't deserve it.
You know, seventeen years ago.
As a mom.
What?
Patty Penny.
You know, that's, that's it. That's exactly what it is. We didn't have Patty. But no, I, I am excited as always for, for graduation. I want the kids to have fun, live in the moment that is graduation because you only get that one high school graduation. And it, I graduated college twice and my high school graduation's still my favorite graduation. So be smart, be safe, and I look forward to seeing you all on Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Grofflo. For me, just a few things. I wanted to reiterate what Mrs. Maroni said about the Memorial Day celebrations. I had the opportunity to attend two of the three this year. I got to go to Esten and I got to go to the Jefferson School Memorial Day observances. And every year, they're just so fantastic. They really, really are. I mean, the schools do such a great job. The kids do an amazing job. And our veterans are there and the speakers are always just so great. And I wanted just to particularly mention Carolyn Jim McGrath, who, or Jack McGrath, excuse me, who have every year donated and been able to provide an incredible music program to our kids with Trooper Dan Clark, Trooper Dan Clark, that's come and really, really done a great job getting our kids in the mood for the spirit of what the day is really about. And really a couple of great events, so I just wanted to touch on that. Secondly, I just wanted to once again thank the members of the Board of Selectment for being so cooperative with us and working so well with us together over the course of the last several months. We've had our moments of good moments and uncomfortable moments, but at the end of the day, we've all kept our eyes on the prize to know that we're all working together for the town of Rockland. And we're very fortunate to have some good leaders in place at all political positions and boards in, in our town. Mr. Phelps touched on some events that we've got coming up. We've got the senior awards night and banquet coming up. We've got Friday night graduation. Two really just great events at the end of the year. All our kids have worked so, so hard to get to this point. So kids, we hope you stay safe and make great decisions right up through graduation and onward to successful futures. Last but not least, I just wanted to comment on what I really consider to be a tragedy for our town. This week, we learned that the Holy Family School would be closing. The Holy Family School has really been a part of the fabric of the town of Rockland for I don't even know how many years.
Seventy-seven years.
Seventy-seven years. Thank you, Tom. I mean, how many generations of Rockland kids that have been able to grow up with quality education and for parents of Catholic families that value Catholic education, that church has been able to be there to provide it. I know in recent years, economic challenges, societal challenges have made it very difficult for Catholic education to keep going. And I know Father Jim Hickey gave everything that he had and gave everything he had, does to that church, to our parish and to that school. And I want to thank him for all the work that he's given to our Rockland kids in the years that he's been there and how sad this committee is to know that that won't be an education option for our kids going forward. With that being said, that's really kind of all I got for tonight. I hope everyone has a really happy and fun graduation season. We are going to be, before we conclude tonight's meeting, I'm going to pull the committee to conclude our regular session and to... and to enter into executive session, uh, for the purpose of discussing non-union salaries, not to convene into, uh, regular session. So, we have, Tom, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, have a great night.